And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, your honor. Councilwoman Mary Ellen Christensen.
Present.
Councilman Eric Heiser.
Here.
Councilman Todd Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rich Guard.
Here. Do we need a motion to... The chair would entertain a motion to excuse Lars Baker and Jonathan Fabian and Mayor Warpness?
I would move to excuse councilmen... Councilmembers Fabian Baker and Mayor Warpness.
Second.
Thank you. Move seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All in favor. Motion passes. We have a quorum, I do believe, don't we?
Yes, sir.
So, we'd move on to the approval of the agenda. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
Your honor, I would move that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. None opposed, motion passes. We'd like to turn some time over to the city clerk at this time.
Your honor, I just wanted to inform the council that at the last regular council meeting, you approved an open container permit for injury prevention resources. The following day, I received an email from Noel Cooper stating that they had to change the date from the second to the ninth because they couldn't get any TIPS training personnel and they didn't want to compete with the fair. So, they just... I just thought it would just be notification to you. They did state on their application August second or August ninth, and I think I stated on the consent agenda, August second, just taking that date. But just wanted to make sure that you understood that that date was going to be changed.
From the second to the ninth, is that correct? Is there any discussion on that by anybody? Appears to be not a problem. Number six on the agenda is Graduation Matters, Riverton Campaign, presentation by John Griffin, Riverton High School Principal. Mr. Griffin? Fantastic. John, I can pass those out while you're talking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is John Griffith. I'll be the new principal of Riverton High School. I started on July first. I've been the assistant principal since the fall of 2010. And basically what I'm here to talk about is a Graduation Matters campaign. And this is something that I've thought of now for a couple of years, but just recently, for our 2011-2012 graduating class, we had a seventy-three percent graduation rate. And that is the lowest that we have had since for about seven years. And we've kind of fluctuated, and that data is also in there. There's a ton of information in here, and I'm just going to highlight a few things. But some of them are more information items. They're as specific to Wyoming and Riverton as I could get. I tried to keep them as specific as I could to our area. And so, it really creates a good time for us to start discussions about this. And there's that front page on there, kind of my objectives, is to gain more community involvement in our schools and also find out from the community what they need from our school. Things that we are not currently providing that the community needs in terms of any sort of education. And so, that vision, my vision for this program is that our graduation become more of a community standard as opposed to kind of a personal choice, a personal option to graduate high school or to not graduate high school. To do that by increasing community in our schools and increase our students having contact with community members. And so, I've been... We're in our kind of infancy stage of this program. I'm trying to gain partnerships. I've partnered with a number of people so far. I visited with the Chamber of Commerce, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. That's the other page that you have is going to be in our community. They're going to have a kickoff, a hundred mentors in a hundred days on August first. And we're going to have a big luncheon at Riverton Middle School on August sixth to try to gain mentors. And so, that's going to be a huge improvement. If you look, that first page also has a 2012 high school dropout, and that's across the United States. So, that's not data that's very specific to Riverton, but the number one causes absence of parental support or encouragement. And number two is becoming a parent. I would say that we are probably pretty similar to those. Those would most likely be our number one and number two causes for students dropping out. And I don't believe at all that it's because parents don't care. I just don't think they have either the knowledge, the ability. You know, they work one, two, three jobs in order to maintain a standard of living. And so, I think that those are things that we need to address through positive mentorships with our students, with community members. We also, I've partnered with Stacy Nelson, the Adult Basic Ed High School GED at CWC. And they're doing a survey for me of every person that walks through the door is going to conduct a survey so we can get really accurate, good data of the people that are in our community seeking a GED. It won't address those that we don't have, but it will address the ones that at least seek a GED. The other one that we've partnered with is Kathy Tackey of Southwest Wyoming, Grady United Way. And they've actually been looking for an opportunity to work in Riverton. I did not know that they would serve us. I just kind of reached out to everyone around here. And so, they're going to partner with us as well. So, I'm trying to gain support, gain partnerships. And again, it's kind of in the infancy stage. There's an implementation plan that's in there with specific dates. And what I'm looking for is for people to... People to sit in a room and talk about these issues that we are facing. Try to find out what the community values, and I'm not from here. And so, one of my professional goals has to been to be more involved in the community, which is something that I think this will give me an opportunity to do that. And it gives an opportunity for people in the community to get involved in our schools to focus around something positive, which would be increasing our graduation rates. And so, that data that you have in there, and hopefully, we'll be beginning these meetings in October. And this is a copy of a program that's in Montana, and it started in Missoula, and they had tremendous success. They went from a seventy-two percent to upwards of ninety percent graduation rate. And now, Hellgate High School is at ninety-six percent, which is the highest in the state of Montana. And since then, that's actually spread throughout their state superintendent of instruction picked up this program, and it's spread all throughout the state. They had a graduation summit that our new assistant principal, Reggie Miller, went to. And the things that he brought back were tremendous. And I mean, they range from... The things that they are doing range from very simple things. There's a mayor. The mayor in Haver writes a letter to every freshman or writes a letter to every student that explains this is why graduation's important. He attends their graduation. He attends their freshman orientation. And so, those are kind of the things. And there's a McDonald's in Great Falls that a teacher goes down to, and while the students are working, if they need math tutoring, they are on the clock when they receive math tutoring. And it's something that that particular McDonald's has offered to do. And so, we've seen some of these things. Kind of a good example of this is I had a student in my office who, we have a CNA course at our high school. It's taught by... Through CWC. So, the instructor is there for an hour a day, you know, Monday through Friday, and that's it. And she was just really struggling, and she wanted to drop the course and get enrolled in a comped, like a study hall class, because she just wasn't keeping up and she didn't get it. And she really wanted to get out of that class. And a staff member walked through and just happened to hear or overhear our conversation. And she said, you know, I have a daughter. I painted her house last week, and she owes me. How about she comes and tutors you? And it was that simple that that student received tutoring from someone outside of the school. And so, I think if we can increase the amount of community presence in our schools, you know, our math teachers can talk until they're blue in the face about how to apply math, but it doesn't really hit home until, you know, somebody actually works on a job and can sit there and explain math. And so, those are kind of the things that I'm looking for. And the rest of this data, on the second page, it's very specific to Riverton High School. And a lot of this comes from different sources. But on average, a high school graduate in Wyoming earns or forty-eight-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars more than a high school dropout does. So, if you take our dropouts just from one year, that's a hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, a hundred-and-eight dollars that is not going to be in our community that could be. And so, if you multiply that over the number of years that we've had dropouts, it's a significant amount of money that we are losing. And so, and that data gets pretty specific. You know, just in the city of Riverton, we already have a higher percent living in poverty than the state of Wyoming average. We already have a higher number of non-diploma earners that live in the city of Riverton than the Wyoming average. And I think it's something that we need to address, and then we can address that together. And so, the rest of that information there, again, it's a lot. A lot of it's on economic benefits. There's also something that Kaja wrote. I also included that in there that we were, as far as child well-being, we ranked eleven out of eleven-ranked counties in terms of child well-being. So, I think there's a lot of different things that we can do with this, and I'm looking for community involvement. And I also included, there's our very specific general data that's in there. And there's also a copy of my resume that's on the back, because I always kind of found it funny when somebody came and talked to a group that doesn't know anything about me, so I included something in there about me. Any questions?
Yeah, John. I see that on August sixth, the manners, the big luncheon activity. Is anybody from the community welcome to come and try to be a big brother, big sister?
Yes.
That what you're asking for there?
Yes.
Is there any requirements on those individuals or...?
No. And I moved here from Bozeman, Montana, and I've worked with Big Brothers, Big Sisters before. And kind of how they operate is that we would provide the students, and then Big Brothers, Big Sisters does all the background checks, the training, everything that's involved in providing a positive mentor, on how to mentor, on what to do, on what to say, what not to say, those kind of things. But yes, and I'm going to send that information out to Jim Davis with the chamber as well as Leadership Fremont County to try to get more involvement in that and hopefully get some ads in the paper and do...
Do you know how many people they're looking for?
They want to get... The goal is a hundred mentors in a hundred days, starting on August first. So, I believe it's October that they're looking at doing, October first, I believe, when they're doing the first mentor training.
When was the... What was the date again?
October first, I believe.
October first?
I think it's on there.
October first, new volunteer orientation?
Yeah.
So, they would get some training through that orientation to teach them what they needed to do and how to participate. They would be pre-qualified after that point, I would suppose.
Yeah.
Or prior to that, probably.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's a really good thing. I think we ought to... We have wonderful volunteers here in Riverton, and we ought to try to help that along and encourage people to come out and support and to get involved in that.
Yeah. And I can send you that email if you have contacts that you can send out outside of the chamber and Leadership Fremont County. We can get that out as much as we can.
Would it be possible to get that on our Channel eleven? Would it be possible to get that on our Channel eleven? How do we... Who's in charge of getting items on Channel eleven?
Well, we have a form that they need to fill out, and we have a criteria. And I can't remember right offhand. Our IT department does that, but I believe we can. And I can certainly send that.
John, we have a... Maybe you know, maybe you don't, but this is televised over Channel eleven, and then there's local communication that you can post on there. And if you'd work with Courtney, she'd get you on that for those manners.
Sure. That would be great.
Is there anything else that we could help you with? It sounds like wonderful activity, much needed. No one wants to be eleven out of eleven.
Yeah.
Looks like we have plenty of room to grow. So, it looks like something that would be very well appreciated in our community, so...
And I was with Stephen Weaver with Leadership Fremont County, so that's who I've been kind of communicating with. And so, as we get closer to those dates, I will continue to communicate with him as far as times and meeting places when we start to talk about how this program is going to look.
I think as a volunteer in other organizations, sometimes they're a little reluctant to get out there and participate. And so, if we could get that information out and get the idea that what would be required of someone, we might be more successful.
Sure. I can do that. I'm meeting with Lisa on the seventeenth, and then I can gather all that information and get that out.
Super. We appreciate it. We appreciate having you as our principal. If there's anything we can do, we'd be glad to assist you. Does anybody else have any comments they'd like to add?
Your honor, yeah, I do have a comment specifically regarding that situation with the CNA. Is there ever an opportunity for a, say, a business to mentor a student that would be having trouble or tutoring them in a business type of setting? Be real specific to that course.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for. We do have, all of our students have to take a career explorations class where we have members of the community come in and do interviews, and they have to have... We also have work experience where they have to have a job. But as far as that mentoring, we don't have a specific setup like that. And that is something I think that we should definitely explore, because we do have, I mean, we're always open to public speakers, people from the community who want to come in and talk about what their line of work is like and things like that. We do a lot of that, but we can always do more.
Tutoring would be something I'd be interested in the healthcare field, but time constraints. So, if that student could come to the job, and I'd have more time at that, that type of setting. And I think that's probably a case for a lot of folks out there, you know?
Yeah. And, you know, most of our students do drive, and so, that usually isn't an issue for students to be able to go to work or attend something. We transfer, they transfer up to CWC to take courses up there all the time. So, that would be definitely something that's...
Yeah. Not so much being... Do the work, but just have that opportunity to spend an hour, half an hour. Say, this is what I'm having trouble with in the healthcare field.
Yeah.
Yeah. It'd be nice to do that.
But we would welcome you.
Any other questions?
Thanks for coming, John.
Yeah, thanks, John. Appreciate it. We'll move on to item seven, Substance Abuse and Crime in Riverton, a presentation by Ernest Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Members of the council, thanks, and I appreciate the opportunity of being with you. I don't know how, if you know how I came to be here, and that is, a couple of weeks ago, I received a phone call from your city administrator, Stephen Wheeler, asking if I would make a presentation here to this work session, similar to what I made to the four policy committees for the Wyoming Association of Municipalities when they had their conference here in June. And so, I told him I would, and what I would also do is not only give you the information that I gave to the policy committees that gives you the information in regards of statewide bases about crime and substance abuse, but more specifically, I'd go back into the database and pull out the data specific to Fremont County and Riverton and give you that information as well. So, that's the reason why I'm here. Is that projector on? Somebody turn it on? Kind of hard to talk about statistics unless you're able to see it. All right. While we're doing that, I really can't start the presentation because it's all about data. Maybe give you a little bit of information in regards to where this data is coming from. I've been working with the chiefs and sheriffs in the state for about ten years, doing something that nobody else in the country is doing, and that's collecting data on a statewide basis in the central repository, if you will, on anybody that gets booked in and thrown in jail. So, in all jails in the state of Wyoming, including the Fremont County Alcohol Crisis Center, it was kind of... You guys are kind of unique in that you have that crisis center, so we didn't want to miss that data as well. So, we collect all the bookends, all the people they receive at the Fremont County Alcohol Crisis Center. And what started out was a project in 2005 where I went to the Department of Highway Safety and asked them, okay, we're good to go? All right. So, let me just back up a little bit. I'll give you a little more of that detail once I show you what it's all about. This presentation is more than just looking at the statistics. As I go through the data, what I'd like for you to do is look at it from a policymaker's perspective. The stuff that I'm going to show you is going to be interesting, but I hope it's going to be useful for you as a policymaker to see if you can identify problems that you may have in regards to public safety and taxpayer money. You know, I live in, I've lived in Wyoming all my adult life, and quite frankly, my elected leaders, which you folks, I commend you for the work that you do. I really expect that you take a look for my public safety. In other words, I want a community that I'm safe to live in, and I don't want to spend any more taxpayer money than I have to for the services provided by the government. So, as we go through this data, I want you to take a look at it from those two aspects and see if you can identify whether or not there's any problems. And so, specifically, what I'm going to try and do is this. I'm going to start out by showing you what I showed everybody else in WHAM, and that is the statewide statistics and the trends that I'm seeing, in particular, the last three years in regards to substance abuse and its impact on crime in the state of Wyoming. But then, what I'd like to do is go a little bit further and localize the statistics. Dig deeper, drill down, and see if we can pull out the data that should have some meaning and should be useful for you as policymakers. Frankly, you control the environment that we live in. for you as policymakers. Frankly, you control the environment that we li- live in. And then specifically, from that data, see if we can begin to identify what problems we may have or who your particular problem uh children, if you will, are, the people that you have to deal with. And then more specifically, what can you do about it? I've worked with communities in the state for about the last thirteen years on these issues, a lot of it underage drinking issues, but specifically in regards to the impact of substance abuse on crime in 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 local communities. So I got a little bit of experience in terms of what works and what doesn't work. But from a policymaker's perspective, I'm also gonna share some information that you may or may not be familiar with, that I think is equally important. You folks were all elected and you were elected to represent your constituents, the people in your community. So I think it's important for you to know whether or not the public will support whatever actions you plan on taking in place to deal with some of the problems that you identify. So I'll share that information with you as well. I gotta, I gotta, I gotta say something at the front end of this thing. I'm gonna give you a lot of stuff and it's gonna give you a wrong impression of me. I am not a statistics nerd. It's not my bag. It's not what I'm into this thing for. But I've been administrator and a management consultant for about thirty-five years and I know you can't make good management decisions about where to spend your money and your effort unless you take a look at the data. And so I think that's why I said, and as you start doing things, you gotta continue to look at the data to see whether or not what you're doing is working. So data is very important. So as I mentioned to you, I approach everything from a management perspective. As I mentioned to you, this thing started out in two thousand and five as a pilot project. I went to the Department of Highway Safety Safety Program, YDOT, where they got the federal grant money. And I asked them if whether we can have some money to take a look at whether or not alcohol is impacting crime in Wyoming. You know, we suspect in in being a cop for ten years of my life, I knew and most cops know that more often than not, if the situation breaks down where somebody goes to jail, more often than not, alcohol or drugs are involved. But we weren't able to quantify it. So we didn't have a lot of time and they didn't have a lot of money, so we selected ten counties, the most populated counties in the state of Wyoming, for a six-month period of time and gathered the data. And that was in two thousand and five. Boy, was that an eye-opener. That convinced us that we needed to continue to do this. So in two thousand and six, we did it again. In two thousand and seven, we did it again for six months in all twenty-three counties, starting in two thousand and six, including the Fremont County Alcohol Crisis Center. We got some additional money from the Department of Health in two thousand and eight, and we were able to do it for a twelve-month period of time. Okay? So you'll see the the picture that you see on the bottom left. I did a trends analysis. And I started out really labeling this thing what it actually is, and that's an evaluation of alcohol factors and custodial arrests, making sure we understand it's not everywhere that police comes in contact with is people going to jail. Okay? Uh I simplified this thing and as you can see the report, now it's alcohol and crime in Wyoming. More people can relate to that rather than that long-term. But the collection periods were all over the place, so we weren't able to really establish trends until two thousand and ten. In two thousand and ten, everybody made a commitment that the chiefs and sheriffs would collect the data on a on a continuous basis and we would issue report on a calendar year basis. The data that you get from YDOT in regards to traffic crashes uh is all on a calendar year basis, so we're able to marry and use that information consistently. So in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, and now two thousand and twelve, you've got a three-year period that you're able to take a look and see whether or not you've got trends uh being established. We publish three reports every year from the data that we collect and uh alcohol and crime, that's this report. I brought it, I brought three of them with you and that gives you a lot of information in regards to county statistics and statewide trends and highlights what's going on in the state of Wyoming. There's another report that you see on your right that's a supplemental report. That's a hundred pages and that breaks down each county even by jurisdiction and city. So Fremont County, you'll be able to see who gets booked into jail from the Highway Patrol, from the Sheriff's Office, from the Police Department, from Lander, and you're able to break out all those statistics as well. That's a hundred pages. The main report is fifty-seven pages. Nobody takes the time to read that except prevention folks, the people that are actually in the trenches. So what I started doing is what you have in front of you, I put together an executive summary of the highlights of what's going on in the state, and that's a twelve-page, easy-to-read uh uh book that that you can refer to and really get a good understanding what's going on in the state and what we're experiencing. Doesn't give you the local data, but it gives you an idea of what's going on in the state. If you wanna take a look at all of the reports, uh I've got them on two websites, the Chiefs and Sheriff's website, that's WASCOP dot com, and my consulting uh website, that's JandaConsulting dot com. So you can go back in there, you can pull them all out from the beginning of time. Uh that's each one of the reports that are there, the main reports as well as the supplemental. As I mentioned to you, as somebody gets picked up, now these are all what we call field arrests. It's not somebody that's being sent to jail because of the court ordered or bench warrant because they failed to appear. It's something happened where police, uh law enforcement got involved with them and they took them to jail. At the time that they go to jail, either the arresting officer or the booking officer fills out a one-page form, collects a number of data that we've asked them to collect. Now I'll share that's the information with you. And that information stays there for one week and then the detention administrator mails it in to somebody that works for me in Casper on a weekly basis and we tabulate that that information and that's where the report comes from. And the data we collect is basically this, the type of crime, is it a felony or misdemeanor? We can't get information on all the crimes because it'd just be too tedious. But we know that substance abuse impacts violence, behavior. So we looked at resisting arrest, domestic violence, and assaults and gathered that information as well as traffic crashes and DUI. The first year we did this, we only collected data in regards to whether or not alcohol was involved. That's pretty short-sighted. The second year, we decided we need to see whether or not other drugs were involved. And because meth is a big thing and a big concern in the state, we break out that data in regards to meth. So we'll show you exactly what the numbers are in regards to meth involvement in these arrests. One of the reasons why we started this, and this is something that you folks need to ta- pay attention to and maybe use in your in your workings on a yearly basis. We asked the person, we tried to find out where the person was drinking just prior to them getting arrested, try and figure out, you know, where are they coming from? Is it from home, from a party, from a bar? And at one time, we just asked whether or not it was a bar, but we found out we were too short-sighted. So if they answered yes, we were in a bar, we asked the next question, what was that be? Which bar? That kind of information for you folks is very telling and very useful come renewal time. And I I think I'll show you some of that information. And then the last, if we if we're able to collect it, the thing that we like to do is take a look at the blood alcohol content levels to see what they are for each of the arrests. All right, here's the data that we've collected over the last uh uh eight years. It's a hundred and twenty thou- almost a hundred and twenty thousand people has gone into jail in the state of Wyoming that we collected information from. That's not random sampling, folks. That's pretty complete stuff. And we're averaging about nineteen, between eighteen and nineteen thousand people going to jail in our in our state. So that gives you a pretty good figure in in terms of the numbers. Actually, I think the figure is closer to twenty thousand because we don't get all the data on all the people going to arrest. Sometimes things happen where the officers don't fill out that one piece of paper. So it's better than nineteen thousand people a year go uh go to jail. Here's the demographics on who we're arresting and taking to jail. Eight out of ten times, it's gonna be a male. I think we pretty well understand that. Now you see the unknown gender, it didn't mean that the officer didn't know whether it was a man or a woman, they just forgot to check the box, okay? So that's that's the reason why you see that category. Average age, this is kinda interesting and it varies depending on the county. The average across the uh the state is thirty-three point six and we've been right between thirty-three and thirty-four. I don't know if that surprises you or not, but that's the average age. Uh which uh county do you think would have the youngest average age?
Albany.
Albany? Why? University?
UW.
Fremont County has the oldest. And obviously, the crisis center has the o- oldest average population. Residence status, we about five years ago, we wanted to know, who are we arresting? Are are we arresting troublemakers that's coming into our town or are we arresting our own? And so we took a look at residence status. Out-of-state visitors, and this has been pretty consistent since the last six years that we've been collecting this data. Out-of-state is about ten percent of the time. In-state visitor means coming from another county is about six percent of the time. Here's the good news. Serious crime in Wyoming, which we consider to be felonies, is relatively small. Seven percent of those nineteen thousand people we've thrown in jail are therefore committing a felony. So that means that ninety-three percent of the people in our jails are therefore committing misdemeanors. Now I'm hoping that gives you a different picture about crime in Wyoming and criminals in Wyoming, if that's the right word, the people that go to jail. It may paint a different picture than what you may expect. And you may wonder, why in the world are we locking up so many people for committing minor crimes? There's gotta be some reason, right? Well, here's the reasons. Here's the pie chart, and if you see anything below zero, uh you can go back to the main report and you can see the actual percentage. But basically, if you take a look at what's in red, sixty-nine percent of the people that went to jail, alcohol was involved, alcohol alone with nothing else. But then if you take a look through all the slices of pie and exclude that one that you see in green where no substance involved, you can see that seventy-nine percent drugs or alcohol. So now you're beginning to see a little bit clearer picture of why we're locking up so many so many people for misdemeanors. Alcohol involves seventy-two point one, uh seventy-two percent of all the arrests. Alcohol in in misdemeanor arrests, seventy-five percent. Meth, I don't know if this surprises you or not, uh this has been between two point ten and two point, uh I think we're at about two and a half at one time, but it's been consistently just above two percent meth-involved. And this has been pretty consistent. We've been up uh as high as nine point eight. We've never gone above ten percent, but uh we've been right on that range of just under ten percent other drugs are involved. So here's the categories of offenses that we collect data on and it gives you the numbers as well as the percentage of alcohol or drugs involved. Domestic violence, it kinda surprises me, you know, from my own personal experience, it seems like that number would be higher. I don't know if we're missing some or not. To me, I think that number should be higher. Uh I don't know if it's being uh not reported when it should be, but we've been consistently somewhere in the fifty to sixty percent range for domestic violence where alcohol was involved. And you can see the drugs also. Resisting arrest, uh this this would be a statistic dear to the chief's heart, and that is, uh you know, as officers out there when they're working and and arresting people, uh almost a hundred percent of the time when they fight and they fight, the officers resist, uh drugs or alcohol are involved. Now let's start comparing. It's always good to compare to see how you stack up with the rest of the state and your counties around you. This is alcohol-involved arrest percentage-wise in terms of all the arrests of the people going to jail. The line across there is a state average. You can see where Fremont County stacks up. You're feeling pretty good about yourself at this point, aren't you? It's not good. I mean, when you start taking a look at uh the number of people you've got in your jail that are basically involved involved alcohol, that's not a, that's not a something to be proud of, but in terms of where the other states, the other counties uh fit in, maybe not too bad. One thing I need to mention to you, we collected the data from the Fremont County Alcohol Crisis Center, but I had to pull it all out. If I would leave it in there for Fremont County, it would skew the numbers. So the numbers that you see for Fremont County are the people that's going to the detention center for the Sheriff's Office, not the Fremont County Alcohol Crisis Center, okay? I'll bring that into play a little bit later. Here's the percentage of drug, and here's the good news. In terms of drug use, uh uh drug-involved arrests in the county, uh you have been consistently lower than the state. This is the one that you need to start perking up your ears and this is the one that if I was sitting in your shoes would get my attention. This thing really, you know, I was a cop in Cas- as I mentioned to you, in Casper for ten years and I trained cops for uh twenty-five years. And so I was surprised to see that in two thousand and five, about ten to eleven percent of the arrests were uh were public intoxication. What's really alarmed me over the years is this has steadily grown, steadily, to now we're almost pushing nineteen percent statewide average. Folks, that's a tell. That's an indication of some big bigger issues that's going on. And let me, let me dispel a myth. Cops don't like to arrest drunks. Having been there, I can tell you. They're unpredictable, they're combative, and they're messy. So if you think cops get a lot of the thrills out of enjoy- uh uh enjoyment out of arresting drunks, that just isn't true. It's something that they have to do. And why do they have to do it more often than not? Do they go looking for them or do people call in because of the problems that they're causing? This is a major concern in a lot of communities in this state. Take a look at the ones that are high. Uh let me back up. Teton County has always led, uh statewide averages has always led the state. Why? Why do people go to Jackson? To party? That's the biggest bulk of their problems and 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 their out-of-state numbers and visitor numbers is obviously gonna be a lot different than the rest of the state. Now, from a public safety standpoint, let's take a look at DUI in terms of percentage of arrests. How many people do we have in our jail that are there for DUI? We average almost thirty-three percent, thirty-three percent out of the nineteen thousand. Fremont County is kinda low and that's a good thing. And there's, I think there's some reasons and and chief, uh when we start talking a little bit more about the local statistics, you may wanna talk about what what the the law enforcement's been doing over the last couple of years in regards to this issue. BAC, another thing that I would hope you would start paying attention because that's another tell in terms of some deeper issues that you need to focus in on, the blood alcohol content of the people that's being arrested. The BAC level for DUI has been just between fifteen and six point one five and one six since we started collecting the data. Folks, that's double the presumptive level. That's interesting, that's concerning, but let me show you, we took took it down a little bit further. Here's the BAC levels for all the ages and for public, look at public intoxication. In other counties, they wouldn't believe that number.
That's just Fremont County?
No, this is statewide.
Statewide.
Uh I'll show you Fremont in a minute. Here's the DUI RS, the numbers as well as uh the percentages. Uh the pers- you know, percentages have been pretty constant. Uh they've gone down a little bit, but so have all the overall arrests over the last three years. But take a look at the average BAC, point one five six. Traffic crashes uh are increasing. This I found very interesting and very telling. So the average is point one five six, but what does that mean in actual numbers? And how about those individuals that were well above one six? Take a look at the left side of the graph. That's red, orange, and yellow. That represents forty-eight percent of the people that were arrested for DUI that were above point one six. Take a look at the yellow and the orange and the red. Over six hundred people were arrested above point two oh for DUI. Folks, that's scary. That's where accidents, that's where people get hurt, and that's where people lose their lives. Take a look at who, we talk about who the problem children are, you know, who are we having problems with. The demographics has been over and over again, pretty consistent, eighteen to thirty is our biggest groups. Now, obviously, you see the big picture, but we're talking about a lot of age groups there, which is the age thirty-six and over. That's a lot of uh, everything else is broken down into five-year increments. So eighteen to thirty is the one that we're focusing in on and trying to impact. All right, so if we're looking at statewide trends, there's a trends in regards to alcohol-involved arrests, meth-involved, drug-involved, public intoxication. As I mentioned to you, public intoxication has been creeping up steadily every year. We started at between ten and eleven. We're at almost nineteen now. So here's the numbers, you know, it's good if you just want a one-sheet piece piece of paper that gives you all the numbers together so you can track it. It gives you the percentage as well as the number for last year and all the critical categories. But I don't think you can tell anything from that. For me, I need to more or less have a visual in terms of where the trend is going. So take a look at the numbers in a different way. Two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, for all the categories that you folks need to focus in on. We've been above seventy percent alcohol-involved arrests for the last three years. We've been above seventy percent alcohol-involved arrests for the last three years. Trend, take a look at meth-involved, above two, but less than three. Drug-involved, under ten percent, and that's been pretty consistent. I'd venture to say that's where we're gonna be for the next couple of years as well. Now start paying attention, because we're trending upwards, incrementally, but trending upwards. That's public intoxication, the last one is DUI. I want you to do the math for me a second. Take a look at two thousand and twelve. And take a look at the numbers for public intoxication and DUI. More than half the people we've got in our jails are there for those two crimes. Does that surprise you? All right, those are the statewide statistics. Before I start showing you what's going on at home, any questions? Anything you want me to elaborate on? All right, let's take a look at Riverton in Fremont County. And again, you can find all your stats. And I gave Kristen the data for the last three years for Fremont County and the Fremont County Alcohol Crisis Center. Did you get those? She didn't give them to you? You're gonna have a total of twenty-four, you've got them? You're gonna have a total of twenty-four pieces of paper that you can take a look at at your own leisure, that gives you all this data. But it's almost overwhelming if you see it in graph form, in chart form. So I'm breaking it out for you in something that maybe you'll be more understandable. So let me show you the data here locally. Here's Fremont County. Let's take a look at Fremont County. And I've broken it down, Riverton, Lander, the sheriff's office, and then the county altogether. Percentage of alcohol-involved arrests. Take a look at Riverton, Wyoming. I'm gonna leave it there for a couple of minutes, folks. That's scary. In terms of taxpayer money, in terms of who you're throwing in jail, this number surprised me. I always looked at Fremont County from the, from the county average. I never dug down deeper than that and took a look at Riverton, Lander, and so on. Does that surprise you? In nineteen, in two thousand and twelve, almost ninety-eight percent of the people thrown in jail by your police department, your officers, were alcohol-involved. Here's Lander. Pretty closer to the state average. There's the sheriff's office.
Ernie, do those numbers include, now, have you added the crisis center back in for those percentages?
Hang tight. No, these are just your guys' that's going to the detention center. Has nothing to do with the crisis center yet. And here's the county percentage. Okay, so right in the middle. But you guys, Riverton, Wyoming is the one that's bringing the numbers up. And again, it's just the detention center. Now let's take a look at Riverton into the main categories. So as we mentioned, alcohol is about ninety-seven percent. Your drugs are pretty low, two point nine-five. Public intoxication, folks, that's scary. Just the detention center. Fifty-one percent of the people going to jail. Your DUI levels are much lower than the rest of the state. And I think to a certain extent, it was what's been happening the last couple of years. And Chief, you may just wanna talk about your saturation patrols. And more importantly, the publicity, the media coverage that's gone with it. Not just the people getting, not just the officers out there, it's the media coverage. Anything you wanna talk about? One of the things that I do know about, because we provide, I manage the grant that gives the officers, gives the city the money so the officer can work overtime. Doing some good things, if you can just keep it up. So the DUI thing is starting to level off. The PI thing is a major concern that you're really not impacting. All right, so here's Fremont County Public Intoxication. There's your numbers. There's Lander. And there's the sheriff's office. Again, to me, that fifty-one percent is just scary number. But then I, you know, percentages is one thing, but you need to start taking a look at the number of bodies, because that's where money comes in, right? And that's where resources come in. So let me show you the public intoxication numbers. Now, if you understand how this process works, and you can help me, Chief, on this, when an officer, the Riverton Police Department arrests somebody for public intoxication, he's got one of two options. Take him to jail at Fremont County Detention Center, or the crisis center.
Correct.
Let's take a look at the numbers. Here's PD to the sheriff's office. Gone down, haven't they? Over the last three years. Now, this could be a policy decision. We talk about policies where you guys get involved. This may be a directive from the council saying as much as possible, instead of taking him to jail, take him over to the crisis center if that's, if that's an option. Take a look at the numbers for the crisis center. So when you ask, are these your numbers or just all the numbers? There it is, folks. Nineteen hundred people, almost two thousand people, your officers are arresting for public intoxication. Take them to jail, or take them to the crisis center. Were you aware of those numbers?
Is that, that has to be, that can't be a unique number. Meaning nineteen hundred was the number of arrests, not the number of times one person was arrested.
That's the number of arrests, yeah. There may be a lot of-
Our frequent visitors are all part of that.
And I think you're catching on to what's going on. But those are the actual numbers. Those are the numbers that has to be dealt with for the resources.
And Chief, too, just to clarify, it was my impression, they're either arrested or taken to detox, not both. Do we actually cite them and take them to detox?
No, but we do run into circumstances where people that are originally sent to detox, then we have to go take to jail because they create a disturbance later.
Right.
Our numbers sometimes don't match these reported numbers exactly, because if we, you know, sometimes we arrest the same guy a couple, three times the same day, because he walks away from detox, and we'll go find him and take him back. We'd track that as two separate events for our purposes. They get reported within the same twenty-five hour period as, you know, one arrest for detox. But I think those numbers are very accurate to what we track. We're a little different just because of that.
The numbers of the crisis center for your information, in fact, I would say almost a hundred percent correct. And what they do is they track who brings them into the crisis center. So those numbers, that's sixteen hundred and forty-four, are those that are brought in by the PD. All right, that's Riverton Police. Take a look at the sheriff's office and the number of people they arrest for public intoxication, and the number of people they take over to the crisis center. It's about another hundred, right? When you look at two thousand and twelve. So you're looking at two thousand people in Fremont County that are busted every year for public intoxication. Here's your DUI. That's Riverton. That's Lander. There's the sheriff's office. So I don't think your numbers are down for DUI because your officers aren't working it. I think you're starting to have an impact in regards to creating that perception that if they drink and drive, they're gonna get caught. But I also think what's happening is, some of the people that may have gotten a little bit too much to drink in the city, get caught somewhere out in the county or somewhere else. That was percentages, these are numbers. And I think from the standpoint of, you know, some good things in regards to what's going on in DUI, I think you are showing, you are making some headway. But there's some deeper issues that need to be dealt with. And I pulled out traffic crash information. This is from YDOT, this isn't from our report. I actually pulled out the traffic crashes, all the crashes in Riverton. The alcohol-involved crashes, really pretty low. And the alcohol-involved injury crashes, pretty low. And then here's Fremont County. A little concerning, and that they're trending upwards in regards to the alcohol involved in the alcohol injury crashes. All right, now let me scare you. Went into the BAC levels. Are the ones that are really of concern, and that's DUI and public intoxication. Here's Fremont County. Two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. Obviously, for the public intoxication, that is a scary number. Here's, here's Riverton. And the average for the people taken to the Fremont County Alcohol Crisis Center is point two-nine-nine, average. I do the same thing every time I look at the numbers. I shake my head, I'm not sure I understand it. It doesn't seem to be right. But that's what it is, and it's consistently been there. All right, that's the data. That's a quick and dirty of all the data that we've got statewide, as well as what's going on in your particular location. And here's the three questions I would have for you. Does Riverton have a problem? If you take a look at the number of, percentage of alcohol-involved arrests, you take a look at the number of public intoxication arrests, you take a look at the number of DUI arrests, and you take a look at the BAC levels, which is scary. I'm not sure you can say anything, but yeah, you've got a problem. And I think you've recognized this over the years. Here's the second question you gotta address. Are you willing to, quote, live with the problem? You know, is, is it something that basically, you know, it is what it is? If people have been drinking forever and they'll continue to drink? Or is there something that you can do to make things better? And I think that's the decision point that this council has to make. And I don't know if you've made that, you've dealt with that issue and made a hard, fast decision. Yes or no? I would hope that your decision with, you know, you're not gonna live with this thing. So if you decide that maybe there's some things that you can do about it, there's some other questions that you need to ask yourself. And I gotta tell you, being, being involved with a lot of communities, some of the things that communities have tried, hasn't been very successful, have been half-hearted, and really haven't worked. So I guess the question you gotta ask yourself, is there any, anything you can do as a council, as policymakers in this community? That can really, not just lip service, can really make a difference? Is this just an exercise in futility? No matter how hard you try, you're gonna be facing these same numbers? I don't believe that. Do you think you can make a difference? How many of you do really think you, it's a tough issue, it's a tough social issue. We didn't get here overnight, and we're not gonna get out of it overnight either. But do you think you can make an impact on it? Let me just tell you a quick war story, that to me really convinced me, and I've been working with alcohol issues for quite a while, but I'm gonna make it a little bit simpler for you in terms of what the policy, what councils can do. A number of years ago, in the city of Casper, we had a town marshal in Mills by the name of Freddie Van Horn. Any of you know him? Heard the name? Well, Freddie was worked by himself, he was a town marshal. And I don't know if Freddie had a pet peeve about speeding in his town, or whether or not the council got on him and said, you know what? Bust these folks. And so Freddie did do that, you know, and I was a cop in Casper during that time. And Freddie didn't believe in professional courtesy. He didn't care if you were the mayor, the councilor, or another police officer, sheriff's deputy. If he caught you, he'd bust you. And tolerance, you know, I probably shouldn't tell you this, but most cops, and I don't know what the policy is with the police department, but in my policy, when I was writing speeding tickets, is anything below ten, you got a warning. Above ten, you got a ticket. With Freddie, it wasn't that way. Five or six in your ears. And with, where the council got involved was this. The city of Casper at that time for speeding, I think, was a twenty-five, thirty-dollar fine. In Mills, they hammered you. And so, I mean, the word got around quickly that you just didn't speed through Mills, Wyoming. My folks lived out in Poison Spider Road, which is west of town. And in order for me to go to their place, I had to go through Mills, Wyoming. And I gotta tell you, it was, it was awakening for me. I can't remember where I was visiting my folks, but it was on a Sunday morning. I was coming back about one o'clock in the morning. And there was nothing moving. Nobody was out. And I'm in a hurry to get home, because I'm tired. And I get to the city limits in Mills, Wyoming. Two o'clock in the morning, what do you think I do? I get two, two miles per hour below the city limits, the speed limit. Guess what I do as soon as I get to the city limits? Speed up. Can you make a difference if you say, you know what? And I got, how many of you run your own organizations or business? I do organizational assessments, you know, I basically try and get organizations to become better or become excellent. And if I get called into an organization because they have credibility problems, in other words, people don't trust their service or the things that they do, I look at that organization's talents for impropriety. You know what that means? In every organization, in every city, there are some things that you can do that are maybe against the law, but you know what? Everybody does it, everybody knows it, and it's okay. Nothing really happens, right? But there's some things that you may do, and you know, if you get caught, you're gonna get hammered. You know, the city of Casper, when I was there, they could catch you sleeping on duty at night and give you a slap on the wrist. Get out of the car without your hat on, and you'd get written up. So the guys would know very quickly what they could or couldn't do. Folks, you have that power whether you realize it or not. You've gotta make a statement, you gotta stand behind it. If we can do that, if Mills, Wyoming, a one-man sheriff's, town marshal, and I gotta tell you, he was very good at it. He created that perception that you'd get caught. Because I hear stories about my friends getting caught nine o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the afternoon, ten o'clock at night. He was everywhere at all given hours. The perception was that if you sped through town, he'd catch you. That's what you need to create in this community in regards to the alcohol issues. It's not there right now. And that's something that you need to work on. I wanna give you a visual image. Good friend of mine, who's now retired from the city of Casper, the chief of police, Tom Pagel, when he would address his council, he would tell them. He said, "Look, the eight-hundred-pound gorillas that my officers are fighting on a daily basis is alcohol. That's what's driving the crime in our city. That's what's driving the crime in your city. You're at ninety-eight percent." So here's your concerns that you got in your community. Obviously, alcohol is at the heart of it. DUI is an issue because that's public safety, that's where people can get hurt, and lives may be lost. Public intoxication just drives so many other problems. That drives your domestic violence, your assaults. People get hurt. Don't have the time to talk about it, but if you wanna know why we've gotten ourselves into the state that we are today, there's a number of reasons. But one of the things that we don't have time to talk about right now is underage drinking. We've minimized the concerns, and we've ignored the problem for so long that we're living with the numbers today because we ignored it in the past. If you don't want these numbers to continue in the future, you need to take a look at the underage drinking issues in your community. And at the heart of it is what? Overconsumption. That's it, folks. If you start down this path, there's something that you really need to keep in mind. Whatever you try to do, it's not a crusade against alcohol. Alcohol is a legal drug. And there's a lot of people in this country that drink responsibly, if you will. But unfortunately, we have those others. The council's average is focused on finding ways they can effectively minimize the risks by people who what? Do not drink responsibly. Who abuse alcohol. So remember I was telling you, but you know, who you need to focus in on? Let me show you something. Not everybody is doing it, even in Fremont County. Take a look at your binge drinkers. They comprise twenty-three, you know, you know who the binge drinkers are? Five drinks in one sitting? Five or more drinks at one sitting? That's, that's the criteria, if you will, for going into that category. They comprise twenty-three percent of the population. They drink seventy-six percent of the alcohol. Now take a look at the next figure. Frequent binge drinkers, which means they do it more than twice a week. They comprise seven percent of the population. They consume forty-five percent of the alcohol. So now you're beginning to see who you need to start targeting and dealing with the issues. And take a look at the number down below. The state of Wyoming surveys, has Wyoming Statistical Analysis Center survey people in the state of Wyoming to find out who's drinking, who's not. They ask a series of questions. Does it surprise you that thirty-three percent of the people in Wyoming don't drink at all? How do you think that stacks up with Fremont County? What's your opinion? Let me show you. You may not be able to see it. I don't know, is it big enough for you to see it? Let me show you what this is. Who ran for elec-, who has done a poll in regards to election results? You know, the, trying to predict who's gonna win an election. You've seen those polls? If we're doing it in the state of Wyoming, how many people has to be surveyed in order to have a statistically valid, uh, uh, prediction? Six hundred and sixty. What I'm about to show you, does that shock you? How can they be that sure with only, apparently, they think they can? This is a survey of forty-seven hundred people in the state of Wyoming. At least two hundred from Fremont County. What's your rate of non-drinkers in Fremont County? Can you see it? It's thirty-five percent. Shock you? You're dealing with a small segment of your population when you're talking about the numbers being repeat offenders. Yeah? You gotta figure out a way. And this is the public opinion that we did six years ago, and we did it again fi-, uh, in the end of two thousand and eleven. Here's the numbers in regards to, remember I told you? Look out for your constituents, the people that you represent. How do they feel about the issues? Almost eighty percent of the people view alcohol abuse as a serious or somewhat serious problem in Wyoming. This is Wyoming first. Eighty-five percent believe that drinking and driving in their community is a serious problem. Now, I want you to take a look at Fremont County. Is it big enough where you can see it? Fremont County, if you total up the serious and somewhat serious problem, you're looking at, uh, eighty-five point four. The people that live here think you have a problem with alcohol abuse. See the little asterisk? Just next to it? And explains it down in the bottom, and, 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 and I had to call YSEC. I had to call these data nerds to make sure I understood what the heck it meant. And it said, "Significant Chi-square test for independence, county versus statewide. Predictability is less than point zero one." Point zero five is what they need to show in order to be statistically predictive. If you're down point one, it means you can, you can hang your head on it. This is what's going on in your community. And this is how your people feel about this issue. Take a look at this community for drinking and driving. See the double? See the double asterisk? Less than zero zero one, which means it's almost a hundred percent sure that's how the people in your community feel about drinking and driving. And if you tally it up, you're talking fifty-eight, uh, eighty-eight, uh, ninety-one point three percent of the people in your community think that you've got a drinking and driving problem. That's a mandate. That's a concern for public safety. This is, uh, I think, this came out of Fremont County. Uh, remember that situation where a brother killed his sister? Alcohol involved. And this is the quote from the judge, "This behavior has to change." One of the things that, when I make these presentations to the councils, I want you to look at criminals a little bit differently. We talk about criminals in Wyoming. We're talking about us, our neighbors, our friends, our relatives. That's who we've got in our jail. You know, the serious criminals, the, the murderers, the rapists, the robbers. Very few. And I track all the arrests that are going on in regards to DUI, and people going to prison for DUI. Mothers, grandmothers going to prison for DUI. How can that be? But it happens. And you can't read it, but basically, I, I highlighted some out of this article. This, this man's getting sent to a prison for drunk driving. Uh, it wasn't his first arrest. It was his sixth arrest. And not only that, he had a number of other arrests that were alcohol involved. So this is the issues that we're dealing with. When you start putting together strategies, you gotta break it apart. You gotta take a look at underage drinking, 'cause you got strategies separately for each one of these. You got, overconsumption is your main one that you really can take a look at. And there's a lot that you can do as a council in regards to overconsumption and drinking and driving as well. Uh, we don't have time to do that, but what I'm gonna give you some recommendations on, you may wanna start down that path where maybe eventually you'll have the strategies that you need to get something done. And you can't do it in one work session. It's gonna take you a period of time to put this thing together. The processes and cities, does anybody know how we got here? How did we get to this point in state of Wyoming? How'd you get to this point in, in, in Riverton?
Apathy.
Apathy?
Apathy.
Living with it? Tolerating it? Accepting it? The reason why I use that term, you know, as the director of the academy, and I did that for twenty-five years, one of the things that I did is I kept a hand in teaching a couple of subject areas. And one of the areas that I kept a hand in teaching was the use of force by police. Because if one of your officers, well, I was, well, I was the academy director, if one of your officers that I trained went and arrested somebody and used excessive force, and they sued your office in the city, more than likely, if I trained them wrong, I could be brought into lawsuit. And I have been. And I could be brought into that lawsuit whether I did the teaching or not, just as being the academy head. So I kept a hand in teaching that. And one of the things that I looked at over the, just before I gave it up, and I taught it for about twenty-five years, is sudden incu-, in custody death syndrome. Can you imagine what happens, what, what the chief's, uh, life would be like if some, somebody dies while in custody? When one of his officers arrested him, and in particular, when they arrested him and had to fight him to take him into custody? Going all over, and there's a number of reasons why that occurs, and it does happen. And so I did a lot of research in regards to that. And one of the, one of the conditions that sometimes precipitates those sudden in custody deaths is what they call positional asphyxia. Putting you in a position where it's hard for them to breathe, after they've been doing drugs or alcohol, or they got pot-belly and, and exerting. And I'm trying to learn a little bit more about this stuff and why that happens. And basically, if you cut off that flow of, uh, oxygen to the brain, that's what they call hypoxia. And that's one of the contributors to what might cause somebody to die. And so I'm looking at the, at, at the research, and it says, "The process of hypoxia is insidious." Does anybody know what insidious means? I know it's bad. It's gotta be bad. But I pulled out the Webster's, the dictionary, and it really struck home. And it says, "Being, becoming well-established before being recognized." And you know, folks? The process of what we've been doing with alcohol abuse is insidious. It's well-established, and now we're just getting our arms around it. We're just beginning to fi-, figure out what's going on. You know, I think part of it is the culture. Uh, this thing is gonna take a long time to turn around. I think we take a lot of pride in the rugged West, right? We work hard. We play hard. And that culture, you know, you can do some things from a policymaker standpoint that can have some immediate effects. But changing that culture is gonna take several generations. It's gonna take us a while to get back to where we need to be. And as you start looking through your strategies, here's the two things I'd like for you to keep in mind. One is you gotta share the responsibility, because you can't do it alone. The police department or the sheriff's office can't do it alone. It takes everybody to roll up their sleeves and get involved. And then you've gotta strengthen accountability. And I put it in red because that's where you folks come in. You set the environment and the rules by which we live in, in this community. And you should hold people accountable for what they're supposed to do or not to do. So in regards to overconsumption, I'm gonna go over this very quickly, and then I'm just gonna give you three things that maybe to keep in mind. I've learned the hard way that if I come in with a ser-, with a laundry list of things that you ought to take a look at, nothing gets done. So I'm gonna give you three things before we're finished, and if you really wanna make a difference and start down that path, I think you can get, you can get some results. You do tips training already, right? I heard Noel talking about that. So that's a good start. Have you had maps? This is for your bar owners. This is for your bar managers that basically is managing alcohol policies and procedures. And what it is, it's taught by the liquor division out of Cheyenne. It's free. And what they do is they come in and give a training session, not for the servers, but the bar, bar owners, the people that own the bars, in terms of setting good policies and procedures for responsible beverage retailing. And they love it. It's a great program. It's free. You're foolish if you don't ask for it. It's a good start. And the bar owners like it, because it really solves a lot of problems for them. They're able to put some good things in, in, in practice. Uh, happy hours, drink specials, restrictions. I don't know if you got a problem with that, but let me go over a couple of things. I, I just wanna highlight that. One of the biggest problems we've got, and I know Casper, Cheyenne, I don't know if you've got that problem here. I would venture to say you do. The overconsumption in the bars is, uh, you gotta strengthen accountability. It said, "You should be ashamed. It's my bartender's fault. How can you blame him? He's user-friendly." Well, that shouldn't be that way. This is out of Cheyenne. Happy hour all day Tuesdays. How can that be? Happy hour to me was four to, four to six or five to seven. Have a couple of drinks and go home. Noon to seven? Take a look at this one. This is Casper. Happy hour, four to ten PM daily. Hump night, every Wednesday, drink free from nine, nine PM to two AM. What happens at two AM? Nothing good. People go home, or try to get there, right? So I don't know. Do you have any of these going on in your city? I hope not. But you may wanna take a look around. You may wanna take a look at the advertisements. And that's one of the things you really ought to clamp down on. Uh, there's a report that, uh, NHTSA put out. The feds paid a lot of money to do this, uh, analysis. But in every state in this country except three, it's a, it's a crime. It's illegal to serve an obviously intoxicated person. Florida, Nevada, and, and, Wyoming. And then they show the drink specials, 'cause there's, uh, there's regulations, there's laws in regards to overconsumption to, so they could try, curb that about the happy hours, about giving away free drinks and those kind of things. We don't have any of those restrictions on the books. Other states do. So you think, you have a obviously intoxicated, uh, city ordinance? Good for you. You know what? But we need a state statute. We need a state statute. You think the people in Wyoming would support that? Making it a crime, a state statute to, to have, uh, to have servers illegally serve somebody who's obviously intoxicated? Take a look at the numbers down below. Sixty-four, seventy-four, eighty-one, eighty-two point two. The people in the state of Wyoming believe that they would support passing a law. Take a look at Fremont County. Seventy-four, eighty-four, eighty-six point five. That's your constituents. So would they support, uh, you guys enforcing you're obviously intoxicated? Absolutely. Here's my recommendations to you. I know what, the time is getting late, and I'd just like to have some time open for some questions for you. Here's my advice to you. I think you can do some good if you put together, and I think you've already started down this road, but maybe I'd like you to consider doing it a little bit differently. Establish an alcohol issues committee. You may wanna call it a task force if you want. But the difference in this committee and this task force, it should be a standing committee, number one. And number two, it needs to be council-led. Now, you've got some prevention folks out here that really are in the trenches, that really has a lot of good information and give you a lot of good advice. But you know what? They can meet all they want, and they come up with the recommendations. Unless you folks are there to hear and lead that charge, it ain't gonna happen. That's the biggest obstacles I see in most communities. These folks are working. They make their presentations, one little shot at the council, and that's it. And then goes, and then they go on to other things. A couple of people out of this council needs to get involved and basically say, "You know what? I'm gonna lead the charge. And I will be there at every meeting, and I will set the agenda. And if I'm not there, another one of the members of the council will be there. And you will report out monthly." It's a standing item on the agenda for the council meeting at least once a month. And I'll show you what Casper does. It's a good way to keep in track and, and keeping book, if you will. But really, this has to be a council agenda item. You can't leave it up to these folks. You need to rely on these folks to do the work for you and get, get the information for you. But you guys need to more or less set the stage and set the agenda. City of Casper has had a, a DUI court for, a, a, a drug court for quite a while. You know what they did recently? Did you read in the newspaper? After they found out that the bulk of their people that they were arresting were alcohol-involved, they have set up an additional municipal court. It's an alcohol court, has its own prosecutor and its own judge and its own staff. And anybody that gets thrown in jail by the police officer that has a nexus, a connection to alcohol, goes to that court and not to the municipal court. And that judge, Judge Nakbar, he's about, got about three months under his belt, more or less sets the stage. And they're trying some new things. And I'll show you the twenty-four-seven program, which I think you really need to take a look at. Basically, if you don't wanna go to jail, you don't have to, but these are the things that you have to comply with. These are the conditions. These conditions work. As high as your numbers are, you may wanna take a look at whether or not it'd be in your best interest. Now, they did the, the, the financial analysis, and I don't know how they come up with this, and I would encourage you to get ahold of Judge Nakbar or somebody of the city of Casper. They did the analysis, and basically, they showed that, uh, the money they were spending to set up this, uh, uh, this alcohol court was revenue-neutral. I don't know what that means. Somebody ought to investigate. I think for you folks up here, it may be in your best interest to set something up like that. This twenty-four-seven sobriety program, uh, pretty simple in concept. Basically, uh, this started in South Dakota uh, as a pilot program for second offense DUI offenders who were convicted. And they gave them the option. You either go to jail, or twice a day, you're gonna be tested. You fail the test, you go to jail. You don't show up, you go to jail. And the testing is done by the law enforcement, or it's dictated by the law enforcement. So in other words, it's an immediate consequence. Now, they can also have, working for the law enforcement agency, they can have college students, they can have somebody else running the program, doing the testing. They won't do the arresting, if you understand what I'm saying. Uh, and it's offender-funded. Taxpayers don't pay a dime. And the price points for the testing is so low that frankly, indigency isn't a problem. This thing started out as a pilot program in six counties in, in state of South Dakota. It went statewide, and they passed enabling legislation that allows all the courts in state, in state of South Dakota. North Dakota just passed the law. Montana just passed the law, and it's being implemented across the country right now. The attorney general, who just got appointed to the bench, I don't know if you saw Greg Phillips, uh, was high on this. This was a priority for his attorney general's office, if he got this point, uh, got this in place. We've met with the joint judiciary of the legislature for the last two times. We're meeting again in LUSK. They're drawing up legislation that will put twenty-four-seven sobriety program, make it available to every court in the state, where they would have the jurisdiction to do that. And they've been freelancing in other states, not just for DUI. Domestic violence, child abuse, before you get your kids back, guess what? You're gonna get tested twice a day. Makes a lot of sense. And they're finding out that, you know, if you keep the folks off the booze and the drugs, they make pretty good decisions, become pretty good citizens. And that's a, that's a better alternative than putting people in jail and then re-arresting them a couple of weeks later. And again, share the responsibility. When I mean by that, strengthen accountability. And what I'd like for you to do, here's the report that, uh, the police department assigned somebody to collect the data. And once a month, they appear before the council, and they give the county numbers, and they give the city numbers in regards to public intoxication and DUI, because that's a pretty good barometer of whether or not you're having an effect. And if the numbers go up or down, they have a little discussion with the police, with the chief or the staff saying, "Can you explain why?" And sometimes there's a very good explanation. There may be a fair going on. They may be having a community event, those kind of things. This, I gave you twenty-four sheets of paper. I want you to go back in there. And come license renewal time, pull this out. Along with getting some information from the police department, saying, you know, "How many calls have we had at each of these bars?" The city of Casper shut down two bars, closed them up, and took the licenses, suspended the license of another until they sold it, mainly because they weren't, they were over-consumed. In other words, they were over-serving, and they weren't policing up their, uh, establishment. You folks need to do that. You can ask any cop in your town who the problem bars are, and they'll tell you. But you'll have the numbers in front of you. I'm not telling you that's something that you should convict somebody on, but I'm saying that should start the conversation. If you've got one or two bars that have high numbers in comparison with the rest of them, then you need to start asking why. And see if there's a good answer. I show this to you. I, I'd like to see the numbers out of the alcohol court, but this is the one, I, I, they've had a drug court. This is the thing that really caught my eye. Participants in the drug court in Casper entered into the program with an average of twelve point six three arrests per person. You know, that's what's going on here. You're dealing with the same people over and over again. You gotta stop dealing with them. You gotta- them, you gotta find an answer. Arresting and re-arresting isn't the answer. There's a sobriety program, uh, I, I am the facilitator for the governor's council on impaired driving. If you go to wygcid.org, you'll see a full explanation of this program, it's a lot of detail in regards to how it runs. Basically, I can't tout it to you enough. It's a turnkey operation, where they will basically provide the equipment, the software that they can track it, the numbers and everything else, the price points are so low, and, uh, there's no long-term contract. If you don't like it, if you wanna do something else, they pull up their stuff and they go. I'm not selling for them, I'm just telling you, you have an opportunity of putting in something in place that'll keep people off booze and the drugs. With a little bit of help over here from, uh, the injury prevention, you know, that's just another tool. They're doing some of that for you, but you gotta strengthen that process. Testing them every once in a while doesn't get it, testing them twice a day does.
Mr. Johnson, what was that website again? That website?
Wygcid, Wyoming Governor's Council on Impaired Driving, dot org.
Wydci?
Wygcid. Or if you wanna just put it, impaired driving council, impaired driving council, that'll go on there as well. Questions? Wrap up. And as I mentioned to you, you're not gonna solve all the problems the first time you get together. I'm available to you. I, I don't cost you anything, I've got a grant that'll provide my assistance. You guys are close enough to Douglas, that's where I live, where I'm willing to come up a, a couple of times as you go to, just to get your feet on the ground, get yourself started, but it's entirely up to you. Maybe you've already got a pretty good handle on where you need to go, but if you need the help, I'm here for you.
If you'll see our goals for thirteen, two thousand and thirteen, the top goal we have is public intoxication.
Super.
And so, we struggle with this constantly, and you may be an answer to, to our problems. Our chiefs overworked from, I think it's a, it's a convenience, we picked up a detox center in hopes to, to help curb the problem, and it magneted the problem to Riverton.
Yeah, I don't know if it's been a blessing or a curse, you know, in some respect, there's gotta be a reason why your numbers are so high. You know, I taught for the university for thirteen years, and I had a couple of students out of this area. One was a, a young mother in her thirties, she said the crisis center saved her life. You know, and I, and I believe they do do some good work, but I just wonder if the accountability factor is just missing. Somewhere along the line, you just, just gotta tweak it a little bit.
Hope to spill some myths for us, um, when you say you can take a license, do we have the power to take a license as a council?
There's a little bit of a question whether or not you, you don't have any doubt that you got power not to renew a license. The question is whether or not you can suspend or take it away. Uh, I will tell you, and you need to talk to the people in Casper, they felt strongly they did, and they did. They took it. And they suspended the license.
Do they see that as a taking, and then we're in a big legal fight with the owner?
What they did is they got so much evidence, when I say evidence, they, the statistical numbers from the police department in terms of what was going on, and the number of times they met with them to try and clear up the problem, didn't do any good. I think they, they got to the point where they felt, you know what? We'll take it on. If we're gonna lose it in court, we'll lose it in court, but we gotta do something.
The chief in his, in his letter to us this week stated that one of the bars in town voluntarily closed its drive-up window.
Wow.
Do you see drive-up windows as a problem?
That helps, that's just another, you know, that's just one thing that'll help the process. There's one municipality in this state that makes drive-up windows illegal. Guess who it is? Evanston. And you know who got that done? High school kids. They went to the council and says, shut down the drive-up windows, cause that's where a lot of our friends are getting their booze. They're, they're afraid to walk up to get, to buy the liquor, but they figure they can get away with being young if they go through the drive-up. I think it's a great idea. Uh, what Casper did is they, they took the, the easy road out. They grandfathered all the local ones, but all the new establishments can't have a drive-up. Evanston, before they made it illegal, used to have a shut-down at ten o'clock. So in other words, at ten o'clock, no more drive-up windows. So I mean, there's a number of different ways of getting at it.
It's interesting that your stats show that we have an older age drinking group, which we already understand.
Did that surprise you?
No, I think we know that very well. And I guess our real problem as we go through that is, is how to affect that group. And the chief's already set up the committee that he's talking about, we've got that committee. I don't know that it's council-supported, which-
It needs to be.
Could easily be assigned to councilmen, and, and chief has pretty much picked those.
Well, I understood we changed that committee, cause I was on the committee and now I'm not.
Right. The honor counsel, it really is, it's, it's in a transitional period now, where it's kinda morphing, we're ending up with this weekly meeting that has, um, treatment folks getting together to share information about specific cases and treatment. But la- last week's meeting, they really discussed the idea of having, you know, this group sort of like it started as kind of a brainstorming group that could get together regularly and talk about, that wasn't talking about individual people and their, and their healthcare issues. And so I think it's gonna come back as a, you know, sort of bifurcated committee, if you will, where there's a group that I think council can be actively involved in, and then this care group or group as something separate, but really is in a sort of a transitional period right now, so.
We struggle with the thought that maybe it's medical-driven, to the next side we, we go to is the responsibility of, of the individual. And we teeter between the two, trying to get some recognition and success on either side of that.
Let me throw this out to you as well, I threw it out to Casper. If Casper becomes the first alcohol, the first court in the state of Wyoming that implements twenty-four-seven, and they're, they've started on that road, we went to Rapid City and watched it in operation, and the, the judge went up there, so he's, he's committed to doing it, but he's gonna start out slow, he's gonna do it for those that are on probation who flunk, who fail. They'll put them on this program. But the RAND Corporation, if you're familiar with the RAND Corporation, is probably the research guru in this country in regards to different issues, will come in and do a study for you folks, similar to what they're doing for the state of South Dakota on this program, where they're showing the effect on the individual. And what they showed in South Dakota over a two-year period of time, they drove down DUI incidents by twelve percent, excuse me, nine percent, twelve percent reduction in domestic violence. And what they do, it's a three-phase evaluation, the next year they, they evaluate the impact on the community through all the streams, the medical, you know, the hospital, they got all the data from the hospital and everything else, and then they quantify it in dollars and cents, the third, the third phase. And talking to the researcher for the RAND Corporation, they got a federal grant to do this, uh, if you folks would actually wanna start up a program like that, they'd come in and do the evaluation piece for you, to see whether or not it's having an impact in Riverton, and maybe able to help some of these other folks that's got some things going on. Last thing before I wrap up, there's the wygcid.org is the, the website. We're hosting a conference for policymakers, which means mayors, council people, county commissioners, legislators, to come in, and we're gonna put on a four-hour program, we're gonna bring in some national speakers in terms of what communities can do to deal with the issue of impaired driving. And that's the date, it's December the fourth, and we're doing it in Casper at the Ramada Plaza. We'll buy you lunch, and I think it's starting around ten o'clock or so, and then you'll be done around two or three. Buy you lunch and give you some good information, gonna bring in some good speakers. So you're more than welcome to come, probably in the next month or so, you'll receive a notice. But keep an eye out, in fact, I'll send, uh, your mayor, the chief, the link to where you can register, for those of you that, encourage you to come. That's my contact information, folks, as I mentioned to you, uh, I'm more than willing, in fact, I really would like to see one council dig up, roll up their sleeves and get after it, and stay after it. Sometimes enthusiasm wanes over time, and you just gotta keep after it, that's the reason why you gotta have different people on the council continue the charge.
Any other questions?
Appreciate the info. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Seeing that there's no other business, my paper says I need a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned at eight thirty-six.